This is in Ward Three, Mr. Lindley's ward, and I'm sure he'll want to call up Rusty Martin on our staff.
Good evening. The mayor and Ms. Sadler Jones both gave a great summary of this, and I'll hit some of the finer details as we go through this request. The PNZ Board recommended approval of the proposed rezoning by vote of five zero. The subject property is located at 2495 Adams Drive in 1221 Pierce Avenue. Currently, there is a home being constructed at 1221 Pierce Avenue, and there are two existing dwelling units, a single-family home and an accessory dwelling unit at the 2495 Adams Drive property. The applicant is proposing to tear down the two dwelling units on Adams Drive and then reconfigure the lots with a portion of 1221. So, in total, the density will not change for the site. There will be three units as the, once the development is completed. But the applicant is requesting to go from R20 and RDA to all RDA. The subject property has a future land use of medium-density residential and low-density residential. They're proposing to change that land use for the, for the low-density to medium-density residential, which is up to six units per acre. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, they're proposing two new single-family homes at the, on Adams Drive. They're proposing a front setback fifteen feet, a side setback of five, and a rear of thirty. So, there will be one new proposed home with a detached garage and then another home with, with an attached garage to it. We'll go through those elevations next. With this request, they're, they're requesting three variances. The first is to reduce the front setback from fifteen, or from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. And then, the second is to allow a reduction in lot size from seventy-two hundred to sixty-two hundred square feet, and then allow a reduction in the minimum lot width from fifty to forty-three feet. These are the proposed home elevations. So, you got, you got your home with the detached garage on the left and then your new home with the, with the attached garage on the right. These are the subject properties. And then adjoining properties in the area. Committee Development is recommending approval of the requested rezoning with the following conditions. From our standard conditions from Section 1201, number one, deals with the composition of the homes. Number two, requires the utilities to be buried underground. Number three, requires the developer or home builder to be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the, by the engineer during a plan review. Number four prohibits the bearing of debris on-site. Number five requires the developer or home builder to meet the city's tree ordinance. Number six requires the tree plans to be done by a registered landscape architect. Number seven requires the lot to be sodded and landscaped. And number eight is a planning schedule for the trees for their replacement. Then we added some special conditions. Number nine deals with the, with the setbacks that we listed earlier. Ten requires a minimum driveway length of twenty-two feet. Eleven requires, or limits the height of the structure to thirty-five feet. And twelve requires the developer to meet all the fire access requirements. Thirteen requires the developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements. Fourteen requires the developer to be, be responsible for any stormwater improvements. And then fifteen ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan. And sixteen ties the approval of the zoning to the elevations submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Y'all have any questions? Can I buy the applicant up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff. And Mary Adam, and I represent Mr. Dickinson regarding this application for rezoning. This is an application that was heard and unanimously approved by your planning commission. At the time, we did not have any opposition. We've received a few phone calls from members of the public, but, but once they learned the, the plans that we had and we provided them with architectural renderings and elevations, then it seemed to satisfy the, the folks that had, had an interest, and that was mainly as a result of the signs going up. But, as you can see by the photographs and the renderings that Mr. Martin's showing you, and by the way, he did a good job of teeing this up. Obviously, there's a house under construction that, that looks very nice. These houses will replicate that in terms of the aesthetics and architectural style and composition. The overall property itself consists of an assemblage of both 2495 Adams Drive and then 1221 Pierce Avenue, and then the addition of a 0.611-acre tract, which is approximately 26,615 feet in size, which is the combination of those two parcels that I, that I just mentioned. The rezoning of the two parcels will be configured into, into three separate tracts and homes. As I mentioned, no opposition at either one of the hearings. Parcels will be reconfigured into the, into the three parcels. Two of them will be fronting on the west side of Adams Drive. And the, the third, of course, on the north side of Pierce Avenue, as you can see from the plat and the site plan. It's going to allow us to remove a house that was built in nineteen forty-six at 2495 Adams Drive. There's also a detached garage with an apartment unit over it as well. I, I guess built either contemporaneously with nineteen forty-six or soon, or soon thereafter. Both of which, or neither of which the city's going to, going to miss. So, that parcel's split into two parcels, each of which will have a, a single-family detached home on those. To add depth to the proposed lots, what we, what we've done is split a portion of the lot located at 1224 Pierce Avenue, and that's in order to add a hundred feet to the back of the proposed lots on Adams Drive. It, it sounds more complicated than it really is. It, it's not, your future land use map is consistent. We, we didn't have to file any type of a fee for a future land use map change, as Rusty had, had said, because we're, we're way below the, the density that would ultimately be the maximum density of six. We're 4.9 units per acre, which is, of course, within your land use categories. If you know this area, you know, I've had some zonings in the area, as have others. There's a subdivision under construction, I think it's Long Go Homes, which we rezoned a couple of years ago. And it's a transitional area. There's, there's many parcels of property that are actually located. It's unincorporated islands in Cobb County. I think your ultimate goal, and, and we're not asking for an annexation here, but your ultimate goal is to bring this all into some sort of a plan of design, which is consistent with the overall design that the city sees for this particular sub-area. But that being the case, we did check with Cobb County, even though you weren't required to provide them with a letter and we weren't required to, to seek their approval. But I wanted to make certain from their intergovernmental coordinator and their, their planning manager that they didn't have any opposition to it. So, we are asking for three variances, and staff is supportive of each one of those variances based upon the, the configuration of the property. So, we think that those, I'll call them concurrent variances, we think are appropriate. And so did your staff. This is a very straightforward type of zoning, which I don't typically get in, involved with, but I appreciate Mr. Dickinson's confidence in me to, to handle this. Your staff and your planning commission share the, the same position that this is appropriate, both from a land use planning perspective and with respect to the aesthetics that you see with the renderings, elevations, and of course, the, the drawings, architectural drawings. Most importantly, though, is your professional staff's recommendation for approval. We appreciate that, but more importantly, we appreciate the manner in which they are able to arrive at those conclusions. So, at the appropriate time, I can respond to any questions you may have. This is unusual in that I haven't filed a stipulation letter. It is so straightforward, but we are agreeable to all of staff's recommendations, both the special and the standard conditions, Mr. Mayor. So, with that being said, I'd be pleased to address any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions from the council? You have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this agenda item? It's a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. And this is in Ward Three, Mr. Lindley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thanks to staff and Mr. Sams for a robust explanation. At the appropriate time, I'll make the motion do pass as presented.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero, thank you. Item B 2020-236, this is a public hearing zoning request, Z20-007. Rezoning from G C to R eight for the development of three single-family detached homes at a density of 4.89 units per acre. 0.613 acres, landlot 559, 1424 Spring Street, Alexandria Properties LLC. And this is, the applicant has requested that this is tabled until the meeting on the third of August. That is in Mr. Lindley's ward. Mr. Lindley?
Yes, sir. And thanks to the, the Fire Department and various folks on staff. At the applicant's request, we, we'll table this until August third, so motion to table.
Have a motion? Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero, thank you. Item 4C 2020-237, public hearing zoning request, Z20-008. Rezoning from G C to R M 12 to M U for, and, and R M 12 to M U for the development of 105 multifamily units, 15,100 square feet of retail at a density of 35.8 units per acre. 2.93 acres, landlot 594 and 631, 2930, 2968, Johnquill Drive, 1650 Spring Road, and 1639 Corn Road, the Woodbury Group LLC. This has also been requested by the applicant to be tabled. This one to the seventeenth of August, and it's in Mr. Wagner's district. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, so, at the request of the applicant, I move to table this item until August seventeenth, 2020.
Have a motion? Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Seven-zero. Item 4D, Resolution 2020-06. Authorize the acquisition to a portion of 2415 South Cobb Drive by all lawful means for improvements to Windy Hill Road. This authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking. Either the mayor or the mayor pro tem are authorized to execute such documents and all other documents incident to these acquisitions. And tonight, Mr. Tim Gould will handle this agenda item, please. And Ms. Sadler Jones, any background?
This is the final acquisition necessary for the Windy Hill project and consists of an acquisition of 978 square feet of property for a temporary construction easement for a period of three years and 789 square feet of property for a temporary construction easement to tie the driveway into the new road. This authorizes the acquisition of a portion of 2415 South Cobb Drive by all lawful means for improvements to Windy Hill Road. This acquisition, pardon me, this authorization includes adopting a resolution and declaration of taking. Either the mayor or mayor pro tem are authorized to execute such documents and all other documents incident to the, these acquisitions. Staff recommends approval.
Did I hear you say this is the last one on Windy Hill Road for that project?
Yes, sir. Is that right, Mr. Scott Cochran?
Congratulations on reaching the end of that. I know you put a thousand hours into that. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is, as mentioned, the last of these type of properties, and this actually is a temporary construction easement, just to allow the, the work to, work to take place. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 4D, Resolution 2020-05, as previously presented.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. All opposed? Passes six-one with, with Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six, formal business, 6A 2020-254, public hearing for the 2020 millage rate. There will be no vote on this date. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
I see our finance director is on her way up, so I'll let her give the background.
We'll take this off. So, this is the first of three public hearings we're required to have by law. We're having another one on August third at ten eight, at 10:30 for a special called meeting. And then the final hearing and the adoption of the millage rate will be at the 6:45 meeting on August the third. Little bit of background on this. We're not raising our millage rate. We're keeping it at 8.99 like we have for the last several years. But because the tax digest grew, we're required by law to advertise this as a tax increase. But we're not changing the millage rate. And during this time of year, I always remind everybody that as long as you have the home sit exemption on your property, you will not see an increase in your taxes if your home value increased. So, any questions? That was easy. Thanks.
We will turn this item over to Mr. Glenn Pickens. For a motion.
I've moved to approve the...
Is this, this formal business, do I need to? Public, okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this agenda item? I'm glad I got everybody up here helping me. This is a public hearing. Anybody want to speak? All right, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Pickens.
Are we approving this? Is that what we're doing?
If you'd like to make a motion.
Sure. Make a motion? It's a public hearing.
No, we don't. Just close the hearing and then that, that's it.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Gosh, Glenn, I keep trying to give you something to do. Item 6B 2020-251. Approval to purchase a 2021 Ford F-750 chassis with a Monroe spreader and Boss nine-foot plow for Public Works at a cost of $106,532, funded in the FY21 Vehicle Replacement Fund and purchased through Wade Ford, 3860 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30082, using the Georgia State Contract, number 99999-01-SPD-0000155, as well as approval to authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The Public Works Department budgeted for replacement of a sand spreader truck. The vehicle has already been competitively bid through the state of Georgia, and it will be purchased from Wade Ford in the amount of $106,523, pardon me, $32, funded in the fiscal year 2021 Vehicle Replacement Fund. The Public Works Director and the purchasing manager recommends approval.
Any questions?
I do think it's ironic that we're talking about a snowplow and it's 200 degrees.
I know. You know, this seems like a good one. Mr. Glenn Pickens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve 2020-251.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero, thank you. Congratulations, Glenn. Item 6B 2020-252. Approval to purchase three 2021 Mack 42BR chassis with high LPT 1,020 cubic yard rear loader recycling trucks at a cost of $541,806, funded in the FY21 Vehicle Replacement Fund and purchased through Sourcewell Contract, member number 18956, Carolina Environmental Systems Incorporated, 500 Lee Industrial Boulevard, Ostel, Georgia, 30168, as well as authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones?
The Public Works Department budgeted for replacement of three 20 cubic yard rear loaders to replace three existing recycling trucks. The vehicle and bodies have already been competitively, competitively bid through Sourcewell Cooperative from Carolina Environmental Systems Incorporated in the amount of $541,806. This is basically a breakdown of $173,929 for each vehicle plus additional cost for warranty for D E F filters. The Public Works Director and the purchasing manager recommends approval.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Just out of curiosity, Frank, how many recycled trucks do we have? Thank you.
He said four, for those that couldn't hear. Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll turn this one to, over to, oh, I don't know, Glenn Pickens.
Keeping me busy tonight. Move to approve 2020-252.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item 6D 2020-261. Approval to install new stop conditions on the north and southbound approaches of Matthews Street at the intersection with Whitfield Street. Nearest address is 2020 Whitfield Street. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The council member for Ward Three, Travis Lindley, is requesting the installation of new stop signs and stop bar striping at the intersection of Matthews and Whitfield Street. Our engineering staff completed analysis of this intersection. A sign is not warranted based upon volume, site distance, and crash data. The city engineer does not recommend approval.
Mr. Lindley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Ms. Jones. I first want to acknowledge the president of the Williams Park Civic Association is here with us this evening. This, this request comes in large part from Williams Park. Over the last 10 years or so, requests have been made on various traffic calming measures. And to date, with the exception of the SPOSS-funded roundabout at Smyrna's Five Points, no such improvements have been made. So, while this does override staff recommendations, we, we do anticipate working closely with them. And I would note that there are three other traffic calming measures, stop signs, that will be going in with their blessing and, and working closely with them. But we did work with Chief Bennett, and a huge thanks to him, and City Administrator Sadler Jones to come up with the specifics on the, the proposed stop sign. The neighborhood felt that speed bumps would be unhelpful and more of a nuisance to the neighborhood versus stop signs. And I would note, stop signs can be enforced versus speed bumps, which sometimes have the opposite effect. So, with that, and Mr. Allen will speak in the citizen comment period, but they have taken a robust petition, and I don't believe they've gotten any opposition. So, with that, I ask for favorable approval.
Any comments or questions from the council? I know we have our city engineer here, Kevin Moore, as well. Is it cool? No?
Nope.
Okay. All right, appropriate time. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero, thank you. Item 6E 2020-262. Approval to install new stop con, stop conditions on the north and southbound approaches of Dunn Street at the intersection with Collier Drive. Nearest address is 3215 Dunn Street. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The council member for Ward Six, Tim Gu, has requested the installation of new stop signs and associated stop bar striping at this intersection, Dunn Street at the intersection with Collier Drive. Our engineering staff completed analysis of this intersection, and a sign is not warranted based upon volume, site distance, and crash data. The city engineer does not recommend approval.
Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a similar situation as in Ward Three, where we have residents concerned about pedestrian safety and traffic safety. And there was plans that the engineering department had worked on for speed, possible speed tables on Dunn Street, but just with the current economic situation, those are put on the, on the back burner. And this is a, a low-cost, simple approach to try to improve traffic safety and particularly pedestrian safety in that very busy area of Forest Hills. So, residents are pleased with this, and I do appreciate the work, the professionalism, the work done by our engineering department. But I think this is the, is the right, right step to take at this point. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 6E 2020-262, as previously read.
We have a motion? Is there any discussion or any questions?
I've got a question. I noticed, I heard about the striping. Is there sidewalk at that location? I'm just questioning the, the need for the striping.
There's sidewalk on one side. So, I think it's a stop bar striping is what we were talking about. Not crosswalk.
So, it's not crosswalk striping?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, that's my only question.
Just a right...
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero, thank you. Item 6F POL 2020-04. Approval of annual leave policy, LV1-0. Update increasing annual carryover limit and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The revisions to the annual leave policy increase the carryover limit for our employees from 120 hours to 200 hours, and for the Fire Department employees from 168 hours to 288 hours, allowing the departments and employees additional flexibility when scheduling and using leave. The policy would maintain the maximum payout of 120 hours and 168 hours for fire, as stated in the current policy. Staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Welch, you want to handle this one?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6F POL 2020-04. Approval of the annual leave policy, as previously read.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item 6G POL 2020-05. Approval of flex time policy, EMP9-0. Update expanding flexible work arrangements to include telecommuting and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute all related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones?
The current flex time policy is in need of revisions. The employee task force on recruitment and retention also recommends changes to include telecommuting options. The proposed updates include changing the policy title to alternate work arrangements, retains several options for flexible schedule, and is expanded to include, as I mentioned, telecommuting while simplifying the request, review, and approval process. Staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Austin Wagner, will you handle this one?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve item 6G POL 2020-05, as previously read.
Any discussion or questions?
This is a good thing we're doing for our employees who have worked awfully hard and, and managed difficult situations, difficult, difficult times during this pandemic, and really appreciate them, and this is a, a nice thing to do for them.
It's one of the positives that came out of the situation, right? Where folks realized they can successfully work telecommute, or work from home, as it might be. And, yeah, it'll lead to, I think it'll lead to a better work, a positive work environment for many of our employees.
And they've been able to do it in a way that doesn't miss a beat for service delivery. And so, they've, they've really covered all the bases. Citizens are still served very well and proud of our staff.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Gould? All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero, thank you. Item 6H AGR 2020-01. Approval of MetLife Insurance Company's 2021 life and AD&amp;D insurance renewal with no rate increase with the stipulation that this product line will not be marketed by our broker at this time and authorize mayor to execute related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones?
The carrier for employee and retiree life insurance is MetLife, Metropolitan Life Insurance Company. MetLife has offered, pardon me, a 0% renewal on life insurance for 2021 if the city agrees not to go out to market. If the city markets the life insurance, the renewal would be... If the city markets the life insurance, the renewal would be at least a 9% increase, which equates to an increase of $15,925. Our broker's initial discussions with other vendors has indicated that they would not be competitive due to the large number of covert retirees as compared to the active employee population. Staff recommends approval of the 0% renewal rate.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Austin Wagner.
I move to approve item 6G, AGR 2020-01, as previously read.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is the consent agenda. Ms. Sadler Jones, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the July 6, 2020 pre-council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the July 6, 2020 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item C, approve amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances by amending Article 2, Section 46-30-46-39 of Chapter 46 of the Code by repealing the existing Article 2 and enacting a new Article 2. This amendment is to satisfy mandatory requirements of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. This item requests the mayor and council approve updates to Chapter 46, Article 2, to include new and revised sections of the city's Code of Ordinances and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Item D, approval of the appointment of Ward 2 resident, Noble DeRicke... DeRica, to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a four-year term that expires May 31, 2024.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as previously read.
Okay. We have a motion. Seconded by Mr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Approved 7-0. Y'all vote. Okay. Thank you. Item 9 is ward reports, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great to see residents out today. I'd be remiss without making a comment on the passing of Congressman John Lewis over the weekend. Quite a significant loss for me personally, as somebody who was definitely somebody who gave a kindness to many people in the community, for sure, not only just in the general Atlanta area, but also in Smyrna for many years as well. So I definitely want to make a comment on that. Also, just a note for all the parents and the kids out there. I know certainly they have a lot of really good improvements going on to various city schools, Harmony Leland, Campbell Middle, Campbell High, Pebblebrook as well, going through some massive improvements, but those will be unseen for a little while, unfortunately. So, you know, best of luck to the kids and the families out there. Summer wraps up and the school year is about to begin, and certainly there's a lot of transition, but I know your city is here for you for sure, and, you know, good luck as we all do something very, very different coming up for the fall. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To touch on what Louis was just mentioning about the start of the school year, I think as we probably mostly know, Cobb County decided to start the year off as a remote learning scenario. And with that, the city's education committee, which is myself, Susan Wilkinson, and Louis Wheaton, along with support from the mayor and council, will look to see what we can do as a city to support our local residents and students while they do, while they remote learn. There's a lot of challenges, from technology to Wi-Fi access to meals, and even helping parents out who are not working from home or are working from home. So there's, the needs are many, and we'll try to do our best to identify some spots where the city can have an impact and help in the coming weeks and possibly months. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things I'd like to announce. One, I'd like to announce the library news. The library has made some adjustments in its services, and this is, this will be, the second floor of the Smyrna Library is closed to the public access except for customers needing to use a public computer. If you need any books from the second floor, please place the items on hold. Library staff will retrieve the materials for you. More details for computer users and library customers are available on the library website at www.smyrna-library.com. And also, I just want to say, because I know that there's been some other discussion about stop signs that the, that the engineering department is recommending, and I just wanted to let people know, if anybody's watching, that has talked to me about some concerns where they thought they needed a stop sign, that those are still being under consideration. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I have no report this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Travis Lindley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. We continue to make progress on the Mount Zion Cemetery Restoration Project. Held a conference call last week. Have another one set in about two weeks, so making strides to getting that property a long overdue restoration. I want to thank Penny with the city staff for her efforts in organizing the Rose Gardens Grocery Assist Program. We were able to help 43 households, and for anybody listening, there's still plenty of money for those assistance grants, so please contact the city. I think you can do that on the city website. And then finally, I do want to thank the city engineering staff. They do a wonderful job, and we have complete confidence in all that they do for the city. And as I mentioned earlier, as part of the motion, we do have four pending signs coming in Ward 3, one on Hawthorne, Clinton, McCully, and Roswell Streets. So more details to come on that front. It now becomes a funding matter, so we'll be back on that front. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He may do a good job, but he has suspect choice in masks, as I see him.
Oh, is that a mask? I thought it was garbage, my bad.
Mr. Austin Wagner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that I'm excited to have Noble take on a more official involvement with the city. He's been very involved in Rose Garden and organizing a lot of things down there, so I'm excited to have him as an official appointee here. Second thing, just keep encouraging people to wear masks. That's really it. I'll yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Glenn Pickens, and I'd ask that you keep it to 10 minutes or less, please.
I'll try my best, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just want to reiterate what Austin said, just keep wearing the mask, and hopefully the light at the end of the tunnel will be here sooner than later. So, that's all.
Thank you. Item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. I know several people signed up, and I also saw a lot of people leave when we tabled some items, so I'll just start at the top. And Alex Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail.
Thank you. What I should have done in the last time I spoke on term limits, to encourage the council people when they're out talking to the constituents in general, to bring the subject up, because a lot of people don't think about it, but bring it up, saying, what do you think about voting on term limits? And that's what I do with the people, because they got a lot on their plate, and when you ask them that pointed question, you'll be surprised, their opinions, that they'd love to vote on it. It's a very popular issue around the country, let alone after Marietta passed it. I don't know how they did it, surveying people, but if you do bring it up to them, that would certainly help. I just want to mention, in the last state election, 14,060 voters in Smyrna voted. That's 37%. That's almost double what we had last November. And in the previous state election, 64% voted. So this should show you with figures that this 20% in Smyrna, we need to close the communications gap. Any chance you can to get people to, whether it's referendums or issues. I surveyed 274 people. One questioned, do you know when these council meetings are? The nights where you can attend and speak if you wish? Four, no. So it's time to reach out to the people, because the last five elections, 20%, is not very good for the time and money and effort that the candidates put in. But again, I'd like to stress, since I haven't heard from anybody with thinking about it, anything on these term limits, go out and talk to your people and ask them that pointed question. That would help you get to be more objective, that you'd say, gee, there's more interest than we realize on this subject. But you've got to ask them, and that way, I hope, in the future, you can bring this subject up. Because, again, Marietta did it, so obviously, the interest in Cobb County is there. And if you ever go to a Marietta Town Hall meeting, it's standing room only, as well as the commissioners' meetings. Unfortunately, you can see what we have that come to our meetings. So we need to build up the participation in Smyrna between the council and the people, because there's such a gap. And I hope with the new people up there, you come up with some new ideas. One is going to be big after the pandemic's over, where you have city town hall meetings. This is very important, to have them every five, six months. And that way, we can ask questions back and forth, and people know what's going on. You've got to convince them, to show them that you have an interest in what they're, where they're coming from on their opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakri. You're over your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, I can't read it, but it's 2938 Junkle Drive. If you live at 2938 Junkle Drive and are still here and would like to speak, come on up. Must have left. Okay. Mr. Rob Allen, 1553 Whitfield Street, glutton for punishment because he runs his HOA.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Promise to be brief. Thank you for your time. I don't think I'll need longer than about an hour. My name is Rob Allen. I currently...
You won't have anybody here?
My name's Rob Allen, and I currently serve as the Williams Park Neighbors Association President. My message tonight is one of thanks and gratitude for the quick action to address traffic calming concerns within Williams Park. I'd like to give specific thanks to Councilman Lindley, who got started even before day one to get a pulse for our concerns and needs. He was quick to orchestrate several meetings with myself, neighbors, and city staff to ensure the best and most forward-thinking solutions were provided. These solutions quickly yielded positive results. As you might have seen, we had the intersection at Spring and Roswell and the railroad tracks repainted. That's now a much safer intersection with a lot better, efficient flow of traffic. We, just now, we got the third approval for a stop sign, which I know that will do a lot to slow down traffic, make it enforceable, make it a much safer neighborhood for us, pedestrians, motorists alike. We also had an unsightly guardrail removed that was, created an obstruction for motorists to see pedestrians and traffic coming across, so that's gone. We appreciate that. And probably most importantly, is the intended update and improvement of the city's traffic calming policy. So I know that now that that's open for discussion, that we'll have a good way and mechanism to make good decisions going forward. I'd like to also acknowledge the supporting efforts along the way by Kevin Moore, the city engineer. I really want to get a good peek at his mask, but I can't really see it from here.
You don't want to look at that.
I can't see what it is. Thank you very much for all of your efforts and all the meetings that we had. Ms. Sadler Jones, thank you for those as well. Chief Bennett, I'm not sure if he's here, but we had meetings with him. And definitely, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for all that you guys have done. I know that oftentimes, as you mentioned, serving on an HOA or in public services, you hear more complaints than you do congratulations and thanks, and I just want to do my part to tell you guys, doing a great job, Williams Park, really appreciate you. We're thankful for what you have done and what you'll continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Sanitizer, come on up. And then we've got Hannah Marie Shambly, 2948 Lexington Trace Drive, Southeast. Hannah Marie still here? Nope. Lauren at 1601 Mosaic Way. She's left. Bruce Kelly, 3,000 Junkle Drive. Looks like he left. Alan Lowe, 2948 Junkle Drive. Okay. Janet Comby, 1231 Cliffwood Drive. Monty By, 1565 Spring Street, and I think I saw him leave. That's all we had to sign up. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? All right. Ms. Sadler Jones? Mr. Cochran? Ms. Heather? All right. If there's no other business brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at 7:50.